Let's be unified, the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is public hearing. Public hearing to amend the Moonfield Good Ordinance by adding an ordinance to chapter 153, fences dealing with required fencing for some pools. Got a motion to open the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public? Questions?
Do you have anything written from anybody?
I have received nothing.
I guess I have a question. In, um, we're at first paragraph, an outdoor swimming pool and/or any other permanent body of water with a depth of eighteen inches or more. Define permanent body of water.
I would say like a pond or a, like if you got a fountain in your yard, that'd be permanent, I mean.
There's a pond behind the hospital that's been there for...
Years.
Years. Are they not gonna have to put a four-foot fence around that?
I mean, there's a pond at the cemetery too.
You have a pond at the cemetery? So, I just wanted to point that out, whether we had thought about that end of it.
Ponds in yards.
Yeah. Coi ponds. So, uh, yeah. So, anyway.
It's county.
Oh, I'm sure it's county.
Boons are in this county. What about the country club pond? It's county.
You barely put it in county.
Well, you still have the...
Well, the pond above the country clubs.
And then I suppose that...
That, I did point that out, I, you know...
I recognized I was in there. From a safety point of view, I didn't see that there was a difference between an eighteen-inch pond and an eighteen-inch pool, so I figured, I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. To formally end this discussion, you should be doing it after closing.
Well, okay.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion.
But, what you should do is if you want to amend or anything, you put the motion on the floor and then, doesn't mean, if you put it on the floor and you vote against it, doesn't mean...
You can do that, yeah.
You just need to, if you want to do amendments, you gotta put a motion on the floor to amend. Unless, you just put the motion on and say, "I'm amending it," right off of that.
So you can make them... So considering the first, consider approval of the first reading of the ordinance to amend the Moonfield Good Ordinance by adding chapter 153, fences with deals with part of fence for some pool. When you make that motion, you can amend it in that motion to change what came off the then, and that, we vote on and then we go to the second per reading.
That's correct. If you make the motion that way...
So if you want to make a motion and you want to pull them two ponds out of the requirements...
My, my question is, man, if we pull that out, are there liabilities for doing so? And we don't have counsel here tonight to be able to tell us that.
Who owns the pond behind the hospital?
Hospital?
No. It's half. That's Kevin Early's.
It's half.
No, it's owned by the property owners according to what the property owners tell me, he's almost part of it.
Yeah. It's like the pond, it's like the pond by the country club boatman's that's got about six different owners.
Yeah.
See, and that pond would probably fall in that too.
Yeah.
And what Earl said, there's some people that have the fountains in front of their houses where they keep koi fish. So you make them put a four-foot fence around in front of their house?
I got a pond behind my house. And then, back behind, it's, but the toys we get to mostly, but, doesn't stop anybody from getting them.
That'll be more effective.
They're probably very expensive.
If you walk through there, you need a...
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Obviously, there's more issues here, maybe.
I don't know how anyone else handles this, I mean, obviously, there's lots of places where you see ponds, there's no fence around them, they're just open, so, well, I don't know our liability.
If you want to have that researched, what I suggest you do is postpone, make a motion to postpone until the next council meeting, which will give you that research and bring it back to you.
Well, this, the way this reads, it's swimming pools.
Well, we have other bodies of water in the ordinance already, right?
Yeah.
See, what you, what we're talking about here is swimming pools, you're right, and now we're raising issues related to what's already existence in the ordinance.
So swimming pool or any other permanent body of water with a depth of eighteen inches or more at the edge, which is less than four foot...
Maybe that's the...
So, great, so permanent body of water with a depth of eighteen inches or more at, you gotta go out in a couple foot, probably get eighteen inches of depth.
Paul, that's...
It's about out for the pond.
It doesn't go... Somebody digs right there, that wouldn't work either, off, off, down eighteen inches.
Right, but a pond where you gotta go, I mean, you have to go out, right now you can go out twelve, but then the pond is eighteen inches long. Now, that's probably where, that's where, now, now, most fountains are, like enough to like that. Or the ponds are concerned, I'd say, that would make ponds out.
Okay. I can live with that.
I, I would speculate that probably a way to handle this is, is talk about the, the surface area of a body of water like this, it's beyond a certain amount of water surface, that might be a way to control it, but I can't say that for certain. But, you know, why don't we just research those particulars and...
Yeah.
And bring it back to you.
So motion to postpone the, adding the ordinance to next meeting?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comments?
You could have an ordinance addressing swimming pools only.
Have a paragraph for swimming pools separate from other bodies of water.
Separate orders for swimming pool and then a deal with the other bodies of water as they come up, but I do think, uh, we need increased safety standards for swimming pools, as well as their location, which these things address.
All that's addressed in here in other areas, but yeah, I think we could, you could address the permanent bodies of water in a whole different paragraph by themselves and take them away from the swimming pool.
In legal terms, swimming pools offer an attractive nuisance.
That's true.
It's the area.
Exactly right.
And you might be able to just isolate the, the whole business to swimming pools.
But we'll, we'll check that out. Yes. Thank you.
Any other, did you say that the, uh, the location of the pools addressed in this too?
It's, it's already in our ordinance, it talks about that it's an accessory building and that, um, uh...
It has to be in a side yard or...
Has to be, actually, in a rear yard, but it doesn't say side or rear, it says rear yard.
But it needs a little clarification.
Yeah, so, uh, we can put in there a reference to that section in the code that clarifies pools as an accessory and, and the location of those. I mean, it's already covered, pools are called accessory and the accessory buildings aren't clearly supposed to be in the backyard unless they're in attached garage. Unless you got aside a corner lot and then it's up to the discretion of the planning and, this is the planning and zoning, planning, yeah, they would set the parameters and then, you know, the code enforcement officer would approve it, approve building permit, because it does require a building permit.
So for somebody to build a pool, for somebody to got a building permit?
Yeah. If it meets the fencing requirements, yeah.
Because of the fencing requirements.
Right.
Only if it's required to have a fence, do you have to have a building permit, otherwise you can put up a pool that's over forty-eight.
He's saying the pool needs building permit.
It qualifies under that ordinance, that's correct. Not every pool would qualify under that ordinance, so if I put it, any waiting pool, it doesn't qualify that.
It doesn't, it's eighteen inches deep.
It does if it's eighteen inches deep, that's correct.
My pool's, my pool's forty-eight inches deep, so I don't think it's...
Well, mine's a little bit deeper than that too, but I think we're kinda creating more hassle and paperwork at that permanent throw up a pool in summer.
Is this still a public hearing?
No.
This is the comments part, I guess, there's lots of...
We're in public comments still.
If, if you throw that pool up in the front yard, then you're out of compliance, and that's why we want the permit, maybe we make the B five bucks or something, so all we're doing is just going through the formality, I don't know.
Would the permit determine the location of the pool in the yard?
The permit may determine the loc, you'll have to put on the permit where the location is.
That's why you want a permit for the pool, in my opinion, there.
Yeah, it's not to...
Otherwise, how are you gonna police it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure enough people can report it if somebody throws a pool up in the front yard.
But you can prevent that if you have a permit.
Well, it's all the water.
Put it up in charge of sewer, for it, and you don't even have to treat it.
No, and I think you're just making it more complicated by requiring a permit for everything you do.
The way the ordinance is right now, the current ordinance, ordinance requires all pools, every pool, including a waiting pool, including a temporary pool, to have a fence six feet tall. Fences require permits. So under your ordinance right now, every pool would require permits because every pool requires a fence. This actually lessens the restrictions on permits and fencing.
Oh, I don't...
Now you don't, right?
Duck ball.
That's just it, you're, I'm not so sure that it shouldn't be less than even more about permits to have a pool. I don't have a problem with having the, ordinance saying you need a fence, and if the fence is required, then you need a permit for a fence, but it's not a permit for a pool.
Pool dictates why you have a fence.
Well, is there any other public comments? I think we'll just do some more research and find, gain what we got here and bring it back. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New business, consider setting special meeting for goal setting for August twenty-third at six PM.
Earl said that he was thinking about providing some food for that, that's what we talked about at six PM. Location TBA, um, I assume it'll be someplace in the area here, but we still gotta work on that, but we need to have time and dates set when we go out and start contacting people to tell them this is what it is.
Find a place to do it.
That work for everybody?
Yeah. Put it in the calendar.
This is a goal setting for...
The city.
City.
It's kind of a work session for the council.
So what do you need for your food?
I was gonna barbecue ribs, shrimp ribs.
You're more welcome to use the fire station, it's got a kitchen and a big open area.
We can do that. Yeah.
Just offer it up.
Okay. Good suggestion, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. So we got a motion to have it at the fire station August twenty-third at six?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and request for direction regarding city council agenda policy.
In an effort to put a little bit of organization to this, I've put out a policy for your considerations with more standardization of submissions and issuance of, issuance of the agenda. We're kinda all over the board on this, and quite frankly, some of the staff members have recognized that that's gonna make them get their stuff in a little bit earlier too, so I think the point here is that we want it to be known that, no later than noon on Tuesday before the council meeting, that it will be transmitted electronically and working back from there. It requires, um, the agenda effectively set on Friday afternoon and that submissions that are in support inclusive of ordinances and resolution documents need to be submitted to us by the end of, of the workday on Monday, so that we can get it on Tuesday, and it's with the understanding that if it's not ready to go, then we pull it from the agenda. I think that's as succinct as I can say about it. I'm looking for input from the council as far as, if they can adjust and maybe make this policy.
I read it, I thought it sounded pretty good. Gives us a better timeline, having things ready, giving us more, sometimes more time to look at things, the clean, sometimes Wednesday afternoon and Thursday, so...
The other aspect of, of this is, is the, who is authorized to submit, um, agenda items? Mayor and council are authorized, obviously. City staff is, is authorized to place issues in general on the agenda that have been internally developed. So the idea is, is that if someone wants to put something on the agenda, a citizen, that it needs to have a city council authorization. It's kinda difficult for us sometimes to say, oh, we don't necessarily know whether this should go on the agenda or not, because we don't know the council's preference on that, so we would much prefer citizens to have at least some formal endorsement by a council member to put it on, or the mayor for that matter, to put it on the agenda. It's also recognized that, um, the scheduling of public hearings, we're not gonna have, we're suggesting that you don't have a meeting to have meetings here, because you have three opportunities following a public hearing to deliver this, three separate meetings, there's plenty of opportunities to deliver it. I know that there's, the council wishes to expedite and, and approve, um, agenda items on third reading, but that's at the discretion of the council and it's at, it's, it's at complete unanimity, right? Or is it one, can be four to one, or is that five oh?
To waive.
To waive.
It has to be approval of four.
Four, okay, so it's a super majority, just approved on the waiver. So, and, and that's not, um, that's, that's four members, it's not, uh, like if there was, like tonight, if it was three to one, it wouldn't go.
Right.
It has to be four, so, um, I, I think that that's the whole idea of this public hearing process, is, is recognizing that you have, already recognized by state statute, the idea of having three, up to three readings of the petition. And then finally, um, the last item on that is to say at the start of every meeting, you think that there ought to be just one very simple agenda item, and that is, this approved agenda is submitted, that is the time when you can make other adjustments to it, that comes to your attention just before the meeting, so that people out in the audience might not know whether their item's up or not, if we, as a council, say, uh, we're gonna pull this one tonight, we do it right up front, so everybody knows. It's a common, uh, practice, you know, in a lot of organizations, just approve the agenda and this is...
You're not only just removing something, not adding something.
That's correct, because you couldn't do, you can't add, you can't add. Well, in a rare case, you can, from the standpoint of, um...
So many councilmen have to write a letter and recommend it, and you can do it right up, but it's got, there's a pretty big process.
It is, it is. But you're right, Darren, it's only for...
I guess the only thing I, I know the public hearing thing, I mean, we have meetings, have meetings, I think it depends on the nature of what we're doing.
You know, I, I understand it.
As if we, if we're doing something, you know, well, even like, let's use a swimming pool thing, for example, you know, fencing where it's gonna cost some people in town some money to put a fence up, I think that needs to be out there long enough for people to know what's going on and be able to kinda, if we're putting a stop sign somewhere, you know, let's put the stop sign up and go on.
Well, I, I think, I think I understand it, let, let's use this swimming pool fencing thing here, this is now the third meeting we've had, we're, and we haven't even had a motion yet to, to approve, one time, so...
I mean, I know there's ways to hold it back to go on, but I'm just, I just wanna make sure that I don't have a problem with making things go quicker and getting stuff done, I just wanna make sure that we're getting, that the public's fully aware of what we're doing, so if they do have an issue with something, they have time to, to address it before we do it.
This process, among other things, will allow us to get it to the Moonfield Democrat and send for the publication too. So that, that's an...
And our website whenever we get it.
That too.
So that another, so people can... I just wanna make sure we're getting everything out to the public to have a chance, can't say, hey, you did that without anybody knowing.
You know, there's a lot of times when we talk about issues before they even go to a public hearing, but like, we had a presentation about fences along with other ordinance changes as just a discussion, I think.
And that's what we're gonna do anyhow, we're gonna have a discussion, a meeting before to set it, and it's gonna be that.
Well, it, we're looking to have, you see, then it takes another agenda item to do that, um, and maybe you're not gonna be ready for it, maybe there's more input that we have to come back and forth for. I, I truly think, Mayor, that, that there is plenty of transparency here.
I mean, there is a...
If the state statute would told us that we have to have a meeting to have a meeting, then we'd have said that, that's what this process is set up.
And that's why we're still gonna have a public hearing, if there's something that we think needs to be out there, we can postpone it if we want.
Yeah. Or continue it. I just, I just wanna make sure we're transparent as much as we can, everybody, so... If it's good, a simple motion.
I move we approve the agenda, city council agenda policy.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion of residential development and city housing development policies.
Skip one.
Oh, I did. Discussion and requests for direction in regard to discussing certain properties for condemnation.
Chris?
Yeah. So this is where the discussion point, but I have, um, the map represents ten properties in town that we have, me, I, I don't wanna put the blame on anybody else, I've gone around and found ten properties that I think are potentially ones that we should target, some of them, they vary in, in, um, issue from gaping holes in walls to certainly nobody's living there and they're not being maintained other than lawns are moot, I can tell you all the lawns are moot, but other than that, it's, um, there's varying issue, varying degrees of disrepair. And we've checked them out, most of them, all except one have current taxes, but I guess I'm looking for direction on how you wanna evaluate and move forward, like I said, these are the ten worst that I've found, uh, there may be others that we could talk about, or if you wanna swittle it down and try two or three to start. The next step would be to notify them that they're nuisance and begin the process of, well, eventually condemnation and, and removal, right? So, obviously, that's a significant step for the city to take, and I wanna make sure that we've talked about it and I've got clear direction, that that's how you'd like me to move forward before... Yeah, I can, I was gonna say, do we wanna...
You tell me how much detail you wanna get into, these are all private residences.
Do we wanna get a list of these and look at them ourselves, or... If I share it with you, it's public.
It is right now.
Right, I mean, I mean, everything I share with you is public, is what I'm saying, so if I share it with you, it's the same as sharing it here, it's just you deciding how deep you wanna go, here.
Are you thinking to that?
No, no, I'm just, like Chris said, right now, it's his, it's his thing, I wouldn't know if we need to look at them ourselves on our own time to see if our idea of what needs condemned matches. I mean, I'm not doubting your judgment, I, matter of fact, I'd be...
I'd prefer to have your backing, I'm just saying.
You just wanna make sure what our idea of condemnation is his.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is, if I share it with you here, or I share it with you in a letter, it's the same to them. Does this include, uh, properties that are ninety-five percent torn down and not cleaned up? It does, at least, at least one, or maybe more, I, I may have, if you have other suggestions, I'm open, but... Well, that's where...
I don't know what your list is. One of the things to understand here is, is that a condemnation process would require a lot of public input, public hearing, and I think that some of these properties may be recoverable from the standpoint of somebody comes and says, "I don't wanna tear it down, I wanna have, I wanna fix it," but then, that's the leveraging point, and you work with them too. Some of them might be beyond, might be, you're done.
Yeah.
Now, if they say that they wanna fix it up, you put time limit on...
Oh, goodness gracious, you really negotiate that.
It's fast.
You negotiate that, you really do, because that's what happens...
I'm on board, I just wanna know what everybody else thought about.
Under the threat of condemnation, do we need to...
So, so you're looking for how we're gonna set the parameters of when we move forward, or...
So we, we have code specifications that say whether or not we can move forward, right? Um, we, the city hasn't done this in three years, probably. So, uh, you know, the reason I'm bringing it up, obviously, it's a significant action when you're talking about impacting our property, so, um, I just wanna make sure that it's clear that that's what you wanted, partially because we talked about hiring and the focus on this, and we didn't, so I wanna make sure this is still what you wanted to, regardless of where council is. Why, they could actually need to get around some, I saw it was an unsafe property.
So what, how we wanna do this, you want us to give you the list and come back two weeks from now and say, okay, you're good, or you wanna add to the list or take the list up?
That's where I'm just seeing what everybody else is thinking, I, personally, I wouldn't mind looking at them, just... I, I, the information that I have here is location, and I do have pictures, and, I mean, we can do it here if you wish, or you can do it on your own, right now. We can do it right now if you want. That's what you wanna do? Away we go. Okay. Part of county, wanna start?
Start with that one on Arkansas.
Right here?
Yes, my...
So, yeah, so this is on Arkansas, I mean, this is probably on the, on the better side of what we're looking at, right? I mean, this is probably on the...on the better side of what we're looking at, right? Uh, you can see it's been stickered for, um...so I...all my pictures are from the public right away. I didn't go on properties to get close looks, right? So I didn't take pictures in windows or anything like that. This is a tree in the backyard, clearly not been dealt with. I...now, in this case, I did, um, ask a neighbor lady if I could go just to get a picture of the backyard.
That's the latest addition.
Right.
That tree.
I will say, we looked at the property next to it, and I did go next door, and I've looked at it. It's literally come into park in turn.
I think a bank owned it.
Unfortunately.
I'm not gonna get into that part, but there's...there's a lot of detail behind it, right?
I don't know ownership. All I know is that, except in...except in one case, all the property taxes are current hips.
Not occupied.
No.
I've looked at it. I've been for three years.
So, keep that in mind, Darren.
Yeah, if...if it's a property, I'm thinking I've heard about there's a warrants vested into it, so...
There's rural ritters on that.
Yeah, but I mean, there's authority into cede, then attorney warrants, so...
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
Put a star beside that one, they're all the back. We'll put a star beside the ones that don't make it, because...
We'll be back. Sorry.
There's two around town, but I had picked out the fucking seven here in the last month.
Yeah.
This is the one across from the daycare.
Yeah, you're... We don't need any pictures of that one.
That was on the list.
We're good. Morningside.
Yeah, I know that one, too.
Yeah, we don't need any, uh, we're good there. Okay?
See, we already know.
Grant Street?
Yeah.
Do I need to go into detail of the Grant Street?
Nope, it's on the list.
Partially disassembled one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's the one you were talking about.
Oh, no, actually, I was talking about Howard D., Frank.
Okay.
Howard and Frank.
Oh, but where it's been tore down, but the lot's not being cleaned up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's the one next to the city building? Is that on your list?
It...it isn't on my list. There's a...no, I just went with structures existing. But we can certainly...
You can finish.
Yeah. So this is...I'll just quickly show you this, what we're talking about here. I don't think there's any question about it.
Oh, yeah.
Right. He's a little fixing up.
Right.
Where's that one at?
That's on the...
The tearing it down.
Very good, you have a practice house.
Yeah, I've heard that they're tearing it down, it's just taken a while.
Unfortunately, when they call me practice houses, I think it's...
I gotta figure out how to get...
Fourth of July, big...
All right. This one is on next to the city garage.
Green light.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dog hair in that thing.
Franklin.
She's laughing.
Yeah, she had the shot. This is at the west end of Franklin, on the south side of the street.
Little paint, that's good.
Is it vacant also? It is. The neighbor said that they have all kinds of pets running in and out.
No, that's...
That's a keeper?
Yep.
Yeah. And this is at the west end of Franklin, on the north side of the street.
There's a lawyer issue with that one.
It's the west end of Franklin, north side of the street. Right in the road running Franklin.
Right across street.
Yeah. Right next to it. Right. Said yes?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the other two, um...I hear one is occupied some of the time and the other one is occupied. I didn't know that when I went and took pictures. Do you want me to move forward and take a look at those, or... Okay.
She's in a nursing home.
Yes, yeah. They're not sick, maybe.
There ain't nobody living there.
I heard she comes...
She's living a lot.
Back and forth there.
She's coming back.
I talked to neighbors...
Is that the one that breaks the door?
I think if...if there's someone that's living there, then you have to go up and say, "Okay." Sure, what's your situation? What are we gonna do?
Yeah, I think you still gotta move forward with doing something to get...
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe a little more gently. Yeah, I mean, you gotta give it an option, which they all have an option.
I was gonna fix it by Hamilton malls.
But just like the building on this...
That's not...
Where you say, "Hey, this is a thing to do, and you gotta move out, then you fix it, and then you give it back."
This one, I think, is occupied full-time.
Mm-hmm. Here he is. Where's that one at?
That's on the old street.
Yeah.
It might be that this is one that he just had new real code enforcement on and say, "Look, you got these things, you gotta fix."
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think he got a pretty good list, really.
One more, I guess.
Say, "What about the one by Hamilton malls?" Yeah, there's one in the trees there.
Where?
Oh, on the south side, kinda behind it.
Yeah.
Well, where, um...
Right beside the shop.
Right across the shop, the other side of the shop.
Oh.
East of the shop.
East of the shop.
Right across the street.
Right across...right behind...
Uh, my...I'll get that.
Right behind...
You can't see it from...
There's one in there.
We can go ahead and give you the lie, though.
Uh, and here's the last one. This is the corner west in Arkansas.
Well, we'll just trade it for that other west. Well, code enforcement, the other one, just add it to the...
It's a yard that...I mean, this one is not...
Oh, yeah.
It's just vacant, I think it's been vacant for two years.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at one time, it was pretty well maintained.
Nice on...I knew the people that owned it. They took good care of it, told they were going.
Well, wrapped up in a bank.
It's a...
Bank deal.
State.
So we looked at it when mom was moving to town.
You know, banks, actually, you press banks, they get on.
That's the thing, when you just don't do anything, they don't have any incentive to move forward.
But what you see, that's just it, is that if they ever wanted to clear it up, clear that title up for their portfolio, and you got this thing, and they gotta do that, too.
So what I heard was the ten, of the ten that I showed you, one will do code, right, and the other nine will move forward with the legal proceeding, then add the one on the...
Add the other one to the list.
Yeah, I have a few. Okay.
Do you have more?
Let's do this as round one.
Yeah.
Let's start here. If you guys...if you guys really do have something else to add to this list, you can bring it to us, don't...
Well, that's where I was getting at with, like, your list, we might have to...
We needed the list, so we got the addresses, then we...
Yeah, and I can...I'll send you the...I mean, you know where they all are, but I'll... Obviously, we'll do the formal list, because...
No, let's do it.
We'll have to sign off on it anyway, but...okay? That's really all I needed at this point. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now, let's discuss residential development and city of housing development policies.
Okay. Um, this issue started...it kinda came up just really very recently, where, you know, somebody is saying, "Oh, you might be interested in doing some development." And...and the idea has been, and we've heard these...these comments before, where, "Well, you know, if the city helped me out." Okay, so let's talk about if the city helped you out. One comment or one idea has always been, is, "Well, I'll put in the streets and you put in the utilities." Um, and as you can tell from a memorandum, is that such a good deal? I mean, there's no indication of who takes care of the engineering, who pre-engineers it a little bit to find out what the cost estimate would be. Um, and when you start looking at, like, a city family development, uh, and cities being asked to participate in this...this type of project, um, what kind of market are we trying to address? If, in fact, we're trying to do two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, and you have a subdivision that's got twenty-one lots, uh, how much of a market is there for two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses in this city? And let's just say there might be, theoretically. Uh, do you wanna put your incentivizations into that kind of development, or do you wanna put it into housing that would be considered more target marketed in...in our community in affordable standard? Not that many could hold and be looking for two-hundred-thousand-dollar houses, or a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar houses, or whatever the number is. And at that...and in that context, um, you know, what...what might seem to be a...a good deal, um, we're talking quarter-acre, third-acre, four-tenths of an acre lots, which is nice. Those are nice houses, those are nice lots. The next question is, is, um, you know, if somebody buys one and they don't, "You know what? I wanna really keep my, uh, my space amongst me. I'm gonna buy the lot next door to me." And we've made that improvement, and there's no return on that. Um, you know, those are the kinds of things that come up in the context of just entertaining any kind of subdivision. The other thing here is, is, uh, if...if we look at utility development, there's a lot of engineering involved here, and should we consider, you know, somebody coming in with a project of this nature, as an example, uh, should we negotiate by saying, "Look, we'll engineer some of this, you're gonna pay for some of this," and at the same time, the only way that we're gonna do installation is if you pays this development, so that in fact, we're not hanging out way too much. Preliminary numbers that I'm seeing is that these things were done by the private sector, uh, for a subdivision of the nature that generally described. You're probably talking forty thousand or more per lot for all infrastructures, and that's not...that's not even counting the gas line. I think the gas one actually happened to that number. That's a lot of money, and if we were doing that, the street costs, depending on how much you would wanna have spent on the street, half of that amount, maybe even less. Utilities individually in themselves, not that much, but you look at them collectively, you...you got a lot of money. The other thing, too, is, is that there's engineering costs related to things that could lead to offsite concerns. Stormwater management, for instance, is big. And runoff, um, obviously adds the legal right to go and flow in the natural direction that it goes right now, but it...you do not have the legal right of having that accelerated. For instance, driveways, roofs, that causes acceleration. Even arguments can be made that if you have truly nice manicured lawns, they run off quicker. So there are calculations that are typically done, these subdivisions, is determined runoff, and how do you slow that off, slow that down unless you have an offsite arrangement? The other thing, too, is when you talk about offsite, the sanitary rowing, sanitary sewer rowing, um, yeah, you can get it out to a sanitary sewer being in some location, but the fact is, is that you're doing that, um, uh, are you gonna have, uh, depending on the size of the development, is that gonna have an impact downstream, or are you gonna be fine? We really don't have comprehensive planning around here. A lot of this stuff is determined upfront before development ever occurs, but the reason for why we don't have comprehensive planning around here is, is that we don't have it really high-growth needs, and the state does not require cities our size to have a comprehensive plan. On the other hand, it might beg the question about, maybe we ought to consider doing a , uh, a plan for...for some of this infrastructure supposed to lead to offsite. That's not a full cover, hence the plan, to say the least, but there are things that we have to make decisions on. That's impact on the future, as far as future developments concerned, and there's things that happen, um, during these developments that could have immediate impact offsite. These design costs, um, would include issues not just related to what we see on a flat piece of paper, but also depths, where we could help, if we do a water line or a sewer line. And...and for that matter, getting access to some of the utilities that we would extend from offsite to the site. There's a lot of places around here, we don't have easements for electric utility, and some of it is due to the fact that it's in the county, even though we're providing electric, electric utility. And we could probably have that requirement. The question is, is...
You're forward.
But the real question is, is what do you do from areas where we don't have easements that we have utilities already in place? Getting access to that sometimes could be problematic. Problematic from the standpoint of legal circumstances, because I'm sure that ultimately, if we have to provide service and do what we be customary, have the ability to do that, that might take a court action. And then, finally, who would be responsible for the extension of offsite charges? Uh, and I got some...one of the things that we have done is, is that we'll run water main to the front of the house, even though the property line extends another two-hundred feet. A...a standard practice is, is to require public water mains to go to the end of the property, irrespective of whether there's gonna be development in front of that or not. And if not, if we not require that, then who pays for the extension to go to the next down the line afterwards? Is that a responsibility of the city? Arguments would be, "Well, it's the city's water main, therefore, you should do it." Well, we didn't do it because people didn't want to have...didn't pay for it first. Secondly, the...the question is, how would you negotiate that extension if it was being done by somebody who privately wants to have a look up to say why? I offered a solution to this in saying, "Look, the cost is really not the size of the pipe. The cost is making the connection and how deep trenching the pipe in with." You know, we...we could say very simply, "You pay for the, uh, what would be the equivalent of a two-inch pipe, and we'll pay the upcharge for expanding the pipe from two inches to six inches." That doesn't mean that we're paying for the trenching and the installation and all that. We'll just pay for the larger pipe if we wanna make that a public pipe. Those are common, um, in my experience, those are common ways to begin negotiating these kinds of infrastructures. And I think the question is, is, um, i...is this something that we wanna go down the road with and say, "Okay, these are kind of standards that we'd be looking at?" If...if someone approaches us, if we wanted to incentivize these things, and we start looking at these costs, and can say, "Okay, here's how much we might contribute to a particular utility extension," but then there has to be a lot of conditions attached to it, and that's the premise of what you would do when you start looking at an overall development negotiation. Quite frankly, when I had this discussion, it...it really wasn't a...a serious discussion. I mean, it was...there was an interest in it, but the real point was, is that, um, you know, I...I would've been concerned about even entering into a negotiation of something of this sort if, in fact, we didn't have market study on it, and we could analyze some critique, uh, if we didn't know really what kind of a project was actually going to be... If we didn't know really what kind of a project was actually going to be proposed. We are dealing with property owners that just want to say, well, they are starting to really let, and really let the market dictate. Well, we have a big, a big piece of action in that, irrespective of whether the project is good or not. And I would assume that the city's interest in this is, if we make an investment in a project, we would like to see it succeed. If we have projects where people say, well, you know, the city doesn't want to do anything because they don't want to give us money, well, tell us what you're going to give us money for. Because sometimes, you know, it might be tempting for us to get into these projects and say, okay, here's how much our exposure is. And if we're willing to take that exposure, then so be it. But it wouldn't be my recommendation that you get too far down the road in a negotiation like this, unless you have at least a recognition that we can't be the party that actually underwrites somebody else's risk. There might be shared risk here. But I would be afraid that we would be in a position where we take way too much leadership in the risk business. That's the rationale for why I put together this list of concerns and give you an understanding that if I were to negotiate some of these things, if somebody came in the door, I'd say, look, here's concerns I have. You know, we need to have more performance front end. We're talking about doing housing policies instead of apartment buildings, what have you. And I think, I would use the same thinking about those, recognizing that if in fact, we want to target a particular type of housing developer, particular cost of a unit, that it might be more attractive to us to put more risk into it. But then we also might be more confident about the market. But I think that on an intake basis, if you do this and start looking at these things, these are the things that I'm looking at. I would want to have a lot of this information really kind of understood that we need to have it before we really get serious about having this discussion. That's my opinion. I'll take your name, but you got it. If I'm all wrong, let me know.
I want to switch gears and ask you something that's sort of relayed. What about infill lots? If we don't have, say, we don't have facilities close by for infill lots. We have a policy now where we don't have a policy on how we provide that or how that's structured.
Infill lots by definition, generally speaking, would have utilities relatively close.
Yeah. But, so say if they are relatively close, but they're not there, how does that work?
I get that. And I don't know how you all did it in the past. But from my perspective, if someone wants to build a unit, they should be expected to pay for that extension to their property. Now, I might be wrong, I mean, Gluefield does this differently, but I don't know of communities that do it that way. Now, if you want to incentivize that, then that should be something that's formally brought to the council and voted up or down.
I'm thinking more about, okay, so there's an infill lot and there's no sewer or water close the end of a spot. The city should have some input on getting it there because there may be a street down here that's not served now. So, you know, that's where negotiations could come in.
I get that, I get that. And I guess, I guess the thing about an infill lot in that regard is, is that, oh my goodness, that lot might be really cheap to pick up.
Yeah.
So there's a reason why it's cheap.
Right.
They don't have the utilities. You know, just because you got a piece of ground that might be, oh, I'll give you this lot for $5,000 bucks, doesn't mean that it's a good deal.
Right. But I don't want to turn our back on the lots that we built out.
But let me give you, to some degree, let me give you an example of something that is a frustration to me. Parkview was built, extends way down there. Only one side of the street is in existence. Why wasn't the other side?
No idea.
Well, from what I've been told, it was political pressure. But that political pressure then effectively cost the city money. Because now, among other things, we are tending for a street, potholes, snowplowings, what have you. Stormwater management along the gutters or ditches. And we're providing that service to somebody that doesn't take pretty much of that. And that's the cost, that kind of cost is what city property taxes, among other things, offset to do that thing. I know that there's a lot of resistance to, you know, require people to annex if they want to get their utilities. Is that a policy that you want to review? Is that a policy that, is it in the city's best interests to provide utilities, particularly utilities that... I think electricity is a little bit different because we have a certain power area that we're to provide power to, whether they're in the city or not. But when you're talking about water and sewer, gas, depending on where the gas lines are, that's a little bit different too. But particularly water and sewer, you ask to do that. And I got somebody right now that truly wants to hook up to water and sewer, who'd be willing to pay for all the hookups. And they're not, they don't want to be in the city, okay? I get that, they're going to pay for the water and sewer through their water and sewer bill. But gosh darn it, they're going to drive down the street to get to their property that's in the city and drive right up that street into their property. I have no reason to say you shouldn't just take our utilities and do what you're given. There's nothing that's defensible from my perspective that says that we can't, unless you all have a policy that says we won't do that. At this point in time, I don't see it, I don't know what you want to do. But at this point, with that particular property that I'm talking about, I have no compunction to say we're not going to do this without an extension. There isn't anything in policy and this is a tough call for some of the folks, I know. But I'm looking at it from a standpoint of people who live in Gluefield and people who pay the taxes. What is fair to them? It's not an easy call. Maybe in bringing stuff, what would be the people that didn't really want to talk about or think about or deal with it?
We have a housing study, the data is there, that we need housing, we are, you know. We need to go down all the roads, I guess, to figure out how to do it.
Then you got to have a baseline somewhere, I mean, to start from. That you can build off of so that everybody has the same. This is the minimum you have to do. If you want to do more, we negotiate more later. You need to have something that you can give somebody that says, okay, if you want to do this, you have to do this. If you want us to help you, what are you going to give us for helping you?
Mayor, that's spot on because if we're going to talk about negotiating these kind of deals, we need to have at least a foundation.
You got to have something that everybody has to go by start with. And then you build from it. You might come up with something two years down the road and says, hey, everybody we've talked to wants to do this. So then you can add to it and go on. But we need to have a baseline for everybody to start with. And I think that's basically what you're after, but...
I agree. Well, I'm not expecting an answer, I'm not expecting an answer tonight to do this. But I'm putting it out on the table because I think it's something we need to think about.
Well, I mean, I think we've all talked about housing. You know, we've got a couple people willing and we've got some areas that are able. I mean, I think the quicker we can get started on something to come up with a plan, it just gives the ball rolling a little bit more because I mean, we can talk about it for a long time.
I think one of the things that I think, to identify what that baseline is, is how much do we want to be into this project from the standpoint of its maximum participation? Do we want to be at 50%? Do we want to be at 25%? Do we want to be at 75%? You know, what kind of number do we look at it from the standpoint of how much we ought to participate? And then, is there a dollar max? I mean, if 25% yields a number that's a quarter of a million dollars, you want to be there? You want to spend that kind of money? Do we have that kind of money to spend? And it also depends on whether you're in a tip district or not because it's easier to finance that. But, you know, the real point here is, is, you know, if somebody comes up and says, oh, I want to do something and we say, well, okay, that sounds pretty good, and we want your help. And you say, well, okay, that's okay. How much do you want? Well, first of all, it's quantifiable. But secondly, if we could figure it out in our heads a little bit and have some pre-engineering so that we know how much we're getting ourselves into, that would be preliminary.
I think your percentage of input from the city would be a percentage you're going to receive back. I mean, I think that's what you're negotiable.
Oh, you're right. It's one.
Yeah. I mean, you know, some bike, some project you maybe only want to be in 25%. There may be a couple, you know, it may be worth 75%. I mean, I think...
I mean...
You need a 25% baseline, I'm just for discussion, a 25% baseline and then you you may want to only be in 10%.
I think the thing about this is, is what this conversation is all about lends to something else. It's a little bit different, but we need to do is to have a policy for housing. What do we plan to set up?
So we have a, we do have a subdivision ordinance that talks about a lot of what you're... It's not spelled out numerically, but we have, you know, these are the requirements. One of the things that ask is, we know we need heat happening and we have a subdivision ordinance that talks about these grounders. Why don't we have any development? What are we missing that would cause that development to happen? I mean, we can talk about, and I'm not trying to cut Gary off here or anything. I think we need to have standards, I absolutely agree, and we need to be investing. But we also need to figure out why we're not getting the things happening right now. And I'm curious, some of you are in this industry or working trades and may have some insight about what are we not doing as a city right now that we should be doing to cause that development to happen? And I don't know if this is the right form or maybe it's later, but I've been sitting here thinking it, wanting to get it out.
We know we need housing. I mean, that's a known fact, everybody in town knows it. I mean, it's just...
We have a housing study. We have that. But that, what that does is leads us to the idea that, okay, we know we need housing. Okay, we know we need housing to address certain markets.
Right.
Okay. The next step, if we want to be proactive, is to start looking at this from a standpoint of, okay, what kind of markets are there and what can we do to match that to properties that might be developed? I mean, we could have property that's really suitable for a certain type of housing, but it is not matched to what's going on in that particular neighborhood.
Yep.
We have a history here in this community of without a comprehensive plan to kind of be, we let, you know, develop all over the place and different kinds of things adjacent to each other and definitely a humans, I don't know, to do some development doing. Because you don't have a whole lot of consistency in the type of uses for housing. That's not to say that you can't do a mixed use development.
Right.
But in doing a mixed use development, then you have to truly have a plan that complements the development itself. There might be rationales depending on how much ground you're talking about too. But John, your point about infill, you know, if you have a lot amongst a lot of developed property and that lot has either some deficiencies or hasn't a house that we need to tear down and then we're going to do, what kind of house are we going to put back? And is the city going to incentivize that? Assume that utilities are effectively designed to do that. We might be incentivizing to tear down, but not to build up.
But right now, we don't incentivize anything to...
I think to...
To move it forward.
I think the condemnation thing is going to help some because, I mean, you hear a lot from a lot of people, you know, why do I want to drive down the street to my new $250,000 house and drive by one that's fallen in the street? You know, I mean, I think a lot of people, every, every inflow in the town has two or three houses on it, but something's going to run out and you're going to hit it.
Well, you know, if we do condemnation, we do tear these things down, that we're owning them.
Yep.
But I mean, I think that helps the whole community by getting rid of them eyesores, you know, that people don't see. And it makes, you know, it just makes the whole community look better than you don't have. This isn't a good part of town, you know, or this isn't a good part of town. You clean them up and then you get people interested in their...
I drive around here and I look for good blocks versus bad blocks. There's good blocks and there's bad blocks. And a ton of times, these blocks are hard. But, you know, that's the nature of a small town too.
And some of it's our streets. And we got, we got, the last division we done, you know, that was told they was going to get a certain kind of street for a certain amount of time, but hasn't been done yet, so... Then people talk to them people, I mean, you know, it's like, well, we was told we was going to get this and haven't got it. So I, you know, let's see incentive there too.
Well, I, you know, I know what you're talking about. And I don't, do we have, I don't think we have anything on record for that.
I think it was a verbal deal, I'm not saying it was.
Yeah.
But it's...
But, you know, let's, let's talk about truly what would be a real quality street. A curb and gutter and 25 feet of pavement, Danny, that's 400 bucks a linear foot.
Right.
Now, if we were talking about having that kind of street, now, I'm not saying that's the kind of street that we'd be talking about. But if we were talking about putting in that kind of street, and recognizing that there's already a base down so you can take some of that money out. Let's be really liberal and say it's going to be 200 bucks a linear foot. And you got 100 foot front on your lot. You divide it by two because somebody crosses the street and you pay for the other half. But 100 bucks a linear foot times 100 feet. Liberally thinking, if that house was paying property taxes to the city, let's say a thousand bucks. Which is liberal, but I mean...
They'd be paying 45 hundred.
But that's what I'm saying. No, I'm talking just the city's portion, just the city's portion, okay? The city's portion. So, 100 bucks times 100 feet. You can say, okay, I paid my taxes for 10 years I was driving the street. You have paid your taxes, but that also includes the police department, public safety, issues, fire, all of these other things that come with it.
Interests that we had to pay for years ago and got your money.
You know, and all the other services and it's like, oh, you don't get to pick and choose. You don't get to pick and choose the services you want if you're in the county. You got to pay tax. You know, the payback on this is after 10 years, that's what I paid my taxes for. We wait 10 years before we're supposed to get any money out of this deal? Because the first 10 years is a house. That's a big deal. And understand, I was talking about very...
Lowest price.
Lowest price here, it could be double that. Lowest price here. Could be double that. I don't know. I, I mean, those are the kinds of things that, that, you know, when people come and say these things to me, I'm going. Well, let's, let's talk about what your property taxes are going. You don't want a police department? You don't want a fire department? You don't want co-op enforcement? But, but just to go out there and say, I paid my property taxes, you should give me my street. It's a. Maybe in 30 years. But you know, you can also deal with this too in a, in the context of a special assessment. Look, you can, we'll put this street in, we'll work with you on a special assessment and you can pay it out over 10 years. For 20 years. And we wouldn't necessarily charge you the 100% of that cost. Maybe we incentivize a little bit, but the, the point being is.
You're getting your full tax.
You're getting your tax bill rooted and they're being paid, they're paying more than the special assessment if there's a sunset. I mean, we can negotiate that too. But I, 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 I think that if you were. A taxpaying resident, Lou Field, for which I'm about to become. I'm not so sure I'd like to see the city all of a sudden just give away something because, you know, I'm paying mine. And I'm getting mine. We can't, it, it's not à la carte.
None of this government stuff is à la carte. You're for done, you're for done. It's only.
Got any to add? No. Guys are going to have to wade into one to hammer it out. I think your policies did it so. When you, when you do your first one, you really get into it. You have a. Like I said, you need to have a. Basic policy, but I think it's going to, it'll, it'll change and.
Try having done one, you're going to learn one.
Like Chris said, we've got a subdivision policy. We just need to look at that in depth and, and enhance it if we need to.
You got, you got subdivision ordinance that says that you don't, in this town, somebody built a subdivision, Chris, they don't have to be able to put down a paved street, right? We can.
Paid driveways.
Paid driveways.
Paid driveways, but gravel roads.
Now there's all kinds of different kinds of pay.
You can have a gravel road, but you got to pave your street, your driveway, you got to pave your parking lot, you got to pave all that, but you can get there on gravel.
You know, you know why there's, there's a paved driveway? Because you're going to get the homeowner on that particular piece. They build a house, you're going to pave the driveway. But it's the developer that has to pay for the street. And, and, and the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, lots can get expensive if you put more and more infrastructure on than developer themselves. One of those things right now is paved streets. We cut a break. There's nothing in our subdivision ordinance requires us to pay for pavement after the. There's nothing in our ordinance that requires us to pave at the beginning. But I would bet that out in the country, houses on paved roads, as opposed to gravel roads are worth more.
Would be to me. Yeah, there's some lots out of the world life where a lot of homeowners love to have. Cornfields. But that hard surface.
That's all I got.
Anybody got anything else to add?
Claims.
I'm going to ask again. Is that sewer building about the? Getting close here, getting close. I think all the majority of claims are in, we're just finishing up all of it, all the stuff, installation, electrical and heating, we're not heating yet. Well, that's what we heard the last time. Yeah, another 12,000.
What's 12,000 for this one?
Well, it's not quite that much, but we had some on last month too. I might have stretched it a little, but. There's two thousand. Just take something, get over it. 23 or 400.
The fact that it's getting smaller suggests that it's getting.
Oh, yeah, it's getting down to the short rows, huh?
No talk on there.
That building's been a good experience for everybody on how not to go about.
Well, you know, that's what happens. We, we were the general. You know, and when you're the general. And, and that.
Live and learn.
I agree.
It'll be nice when it's done though. Motion to approve the claim. Second. All in favor? Is there any public comments on anything else? Gary, you got any reports?
Depending on when my move is ultimately going to happen here. I might be signed up to go to the Iowa municipal conference. Council of Los Angeles City, Council of Los. I'd be registered back quick. It's a two and a half day conference. I'll be in some time. But that's only if I know that. Everything else gets scheduled.
You like that house you live in that you bought?
No. You know better than that. So is my landlord. I just had the. Signing acceptance offer today, so now it's down to wrestling with the mortgage company. And why are we wrestling?
All right. Danny, you got anything?
Sure. Um, so since last council meeting, a lot of things have been going on. Of course, French managers in town and a lot of people have been seeing those around. They're doing a lot of preliminary, getting ready for cleaning block grant with sewer and water. So a lot of locates going on with that. I know there's been a lot more locates. And we actually got now the shy coming in too on the bridge forward is more located down on Southeast Street. So, uh, we're going to be doing soil samples for that project starting Monday and getting ready for that for the bridge project. Uh, we're just finishing up tonight on the, uh, E Street main, uh, E Street water main down there. So they just poured concrete here a little bit ago. Uh, and we'll try to dry them. We'll start, uh, getting air out of that one and the water. So that's where I hope we get that done for Sunday morning. Streets been working on a lot of, I know some patching streets, a lot of automated meter inventory. I know Chris can talk about that later. Of course, water department's been working on that E Street project. Uh, starting next week, we're going to put in new hydropower tools. We're going to be doing a hydro equipment in there. Gas and working on some towers, a lot of the, they've been working on their gig list from their last inspection we had. So they've been doing a lot of that and working on this. You know, with a lot of locates, actually locates meter reading for the last week. We've been doing a lot of that. So we're working on that. Uh, lucky dispute and working with KEOA, getting ready for the pole, uh, thing coming. We had the KEOA guy here in town this week and did some of that. And actually working on some transformers too over there, Troy Elevator and over at. Our building there. So we're on that. And then, uh, of course, like the generation, they did their engine exercising last week. Nothing, just for the public to watch, we're, we're communication and we don't have our code reds announced. We're trying to work on our communication. We go and push a lot more towards that government channel. So looking at the government channel and also, uh, I think the Democratic Democrats have been advertising there as much as we can on some of the stuff we're doing for street posters and that stuff. So just try and watch our Facebook page too. So just a lot of that going on. And the last thing I had was I was, I was a question about, I had a email from the, uh, one of the council members. I sent an email out about the parking size for locusts with the streets on there. Uh, I just wanted to correct my email I sent out. Actually, I said 10 parking spaces on there. I re-measured just before the meeting here and it's actually nine. So one section was seven. It's actually about six. So pulling off that area there. Other than that, any questions?
I'll just, as a side note, we checked behind here as far as whether this is an alley or a property. It's property, but there's not enough.
First things first, I want to introduce Keely Johnson. Please stand. Uh, she started Monday. She's, uh, she's the administrative assistant to Danny and me. Dived right in. She's getting to work, working hard. What's the phrase you use? You're what?
You use them for fire hydrants.
Yeah, so a lot coming at her at once, but you were dispatch before, so it's nothing new, right?
I use their pressures as a catalog to the catalog.
Anyway, she, we're glad she's here. We're both really glad she's here. Uh, let's see. Danny mentioned that we were doing a meter inventory and so there's a couple of things that are, that are happening here. One is Tuesday, we're going to have our pre-construction meeting with the meter installers. So I know we've been talking for, I don't know, 14, 15 years about meters, right? Not really that long, but we'll, we'll be getting started soon. One of the things that we've been doing is, um, this represents two things. One is. All the red dots you see here are meters that we haven't yet inventoried. And the green dots is where Lucy has gone, Lisa, excuse me, has gone out and, um. Taken pictures of every single meter and cataloged them. So we know what kind it is, what serial number is. All this stuff verified in the field along with pictures. It's kind of funny. Keely, one of the first things she said is, hey, is there anybody out taking pictures of houses along East Street? Danny, no. No, there's nobody doing, well, it was Lisa. She was taking pictures. She, Keely caught it. We didn't. The other thing that's important here, you'll notice this is all computerized. Uh, so we've started moving to a GIS system. It's a very, uh, entry level GIS system. But it's also the same one that we had our, um, pole inventory on and we'll, and we're talking about ways that we can get the, um. We'll start with probably the next couple of steps will be talking about getting our manholes GIS. And then aligned with our transformers, right? And once we have those spots, then we can begin to connect them. So when, uh, with some additional equipment. Jeremy and Lane could go, when they go down into a manhole in their Camry, they'll have that point and it'll all be mapped as well. So we can begin to get our sewers electronically mapped, um, our, all of our electrical lines. We can get the conduit and all of that. So.
Gas valves shut off.
We're getting there. Yeah. So we're just highlighting what are our priorities and we knew we needed this information. So the next thing is, and probably gas calls makes a lot of sense for our next step, right?
Chris, how long did it take Lisa to do that?
So this is about two and a half weeks worth of work of her going out and doing it. But this is clearly the highest. I mean, there's 4,500 points of contact here, right? There's nothing else we have that has that many points of contact. But those are the two things. Uh, you guys are talking about conferences. I'm planning to go to the downtown conference at the end of the month. And I'm going to be on vacation from next Wednesday until Tuesday. So the ninth or the eighth through the 14th. Anything else? No, thanks.
Uh, Chris, one thing, closed session next time.
Yeah, we're going to do a closed session next time, uh, just to go through where we are. We've had a great increase notice. I want to make sure you guys are aware what that means to us. And that's proprietary information from Southern High Electric. So that's why we go into closed session.
Is the new, the new metering, when it's done. Going to be a little bit different than the handheld so that they lose some data. They don't have to go back out and read the whole book again.
So that's a really loaded question. I think the answer is yes, but I don't think that.
Does that happen to walk? We can drive?
Well, we can certainly drive and do it all in about three hours, right? So that's one thing. So even if we. Right. If we had to do it all over again, it doesn't take a day, but. We're not 100% certain that it's the meter gun's fault for losing the data. I mean, I'm just, we're still trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm just asking if this is going to have less possibility of that happening than.
Yeah, and it'll be, um, you, you will see the data coming in. So we'll know that we're receiving it. It'll actually be a map that gets ticked off as we go. That's how they know that they're getting all the information and it'll, and the unit will have more storage capability.
NPA is saying that we may very well have. Computer problem at, at City Law. We're changing how to compute because of it.
Sean White. RG.
I've got a couple of things. August 14th at 6:00 PM, we'll be having a hazmat operations. Class presented by Jerry Eslick. The state's not, is no longer going to be sending out ERGs, the yellow books. So we will be concentrating on using a wiser app. That you can put on our phone, your phone, our phone. That's what we'll be concentrating on. You get the ERG, but the state's no longer going to fund that. Next on my list. Uh, need to kind of move, start moving forward on our storm sirens. We dodged a bullet on the 19th. I talked to Scott at frontline. Our sirens are still sitting on the shelf. Need to start laying the footwork where we want to put them, how we want to proceed, if we're going to proceed. We've got the $5,000 foundation grant for that. We budgeted for it, part of it. Just need to get moved for it. I'd like to have that done by September, October. Our second round of bad weather season hits. So I'll have to dig my map out and see if it's, there's city property in the area that we can utilize. Last but not least. I'll put this, what's it going to take to get my guys paid? I turned in the payroll the first of July and my firemen still haven't been paid. And I'm not blaming anybody in person because I know they're busy. But I watched Jim Nelson hand in his payroll on Monday for his lifeguards. They got paid. My guys still haven't. They're a little upset right now, to say the least. I'm asking, what's it going to take to get the help needed? To get our paychecks out in the time of matter? Cause I'm guarantee you, if the city employees didn't get paid for three payrolls, they'd be a little upset too. I'm just asking for guidance and help here. Because when they call me and they're upset. I guarantee it's a lot more to the point than what I'm saying right now.
I found out about this five minutes before the meeting tonight. Get a hold of me out. Yeah, I was going to say.
This is the second time this has happened.
This, that conversation should have been Gary and then us. Yeah, if, if I had known weeks ago, maybe we could address it too.
Wish it got this far, is what I'm saying. I mean, mine, I turned it in right that first week in July. Like I'm supposed to and.
There's a lot involved in the fire department payroll. First of all, I have to go through it sheet by sheet to make sure everything is there, which it hardly ever is.
But I gave you the list of the calls that they're on and I give you what I get. So a lot of times I'm going back to dispatch and getting paperwork. So what do I need to do to make this? Less cumbersome so that we can make this easy for you.
All of the information needs to be on the sheets.
Like what?
The township it was in, that's never on the sheets.
That's never been told. I gave you the township when I turned in that big master list.
Townships are hardly ever on there.
I think that's a discussion for you and Gary and Sandy to have. Okay? I.
Get it. We sure want to get to people's thing.
Yep, we do. We do.
We need to throw more assets out. I mean, we have to do what we have to do to get help, get it done.
Are you around tomorrow?
No, I better work. I'll stop in after I get back in town. Will you be around after 3:00?
I was going to have a blood test tomorrow.
That's fine.
Are you? Free, I, I'll, I'll work it. You're going to be here at 3:00. I'll do it. I mean, I can see your. I, I can change that, but if you're going to be here at 3:00, I'll be here.
Close to 3:00 10.
My, my blood work takes 10 minutes, so it's, I just had.
Thanks. I don't have a bridge on 149 anymore.
No. I'll be there at 3:00.
Is that it?
Is that it?
We have a guy coming from J O Company to do a pool study to give us documentation of where we can improve, where we're deficient, and then decide where, I mean, where we want to go from there. Start somewhere with the pool, splash pad, I mean, whatever, where he thinks we can improve, so.
Is that it?
Yep.
Council on mates, anybody have any meetings to attend?
Oh, I had a DC-DC meeting, I've got a couple of, I don't know whether this was, was accomplished, the paper, a letter to the editor from Crowder?
Yes, we did have the letter. Oh, that was...
And a letter of appreciation from Roland Simmons and family to DC-DC, I'm not going to read it, but if anybody wants to.
That was in the paper, too, so that's there.
They're very busy, think you're going well, probably going to expand, hire more people.
Jack, you got anything?
I'd just like to say that I had a wonderful fair, it was nice to be able to go out and enjoy that. I'd like to say thank you to all the folks that put all their efforts into that. A lot of people donate and dedicate a lot of time and energy, so much appreciated.
Appreciate the governor being here yesterday and the ribbon cutting. That was some great publicity for Louisville, and Dan cleans up pretty good.
Yeah, it does. I couldn't do it without. I hope somebody got a picture. I got a lot, I got a lot of pictures.
That's good.
A lot of mileage, you know, but two.
I just wanted, yeah, but meeting the governor and the lieutenant governor's experience and getting to talk to him one-on-one a little bit, the solar people, good experience with vice presentation, short and sweet, worked out good. Other than that, I don't know, he followed the instructions. While I did read the whole page.
I was talking about short and sweet and everybody said it.
So, other than that, I don't think I have anything else.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.